Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Friday meeting of the Arkansas State Board of Education. We've got a fairly short agenda this morning, but we do have some good time for reports. And first up is, my packet here, we have a report from the Arkansas Teacher Corps, and an update on that program now at five years, Brandon, is that right? Five year, a five-year report on the Arkansas Teacher Corps program. You do have a PowerPoint in your packet, but I think you're gonna probably go through it as well, but folks will look on their computers, it's there. So, welcome.
Great, thank you so much, and good morning. Thank you for having me. So, my name is Brandon Lucius. I'm actually new in this role as Executive Director with the Arkansas Teacher Corps, but I'm not new to the program. I've actually worked with ATC almost since the beginning. Joined the year after we started as a part-time position. Worked throughout the summer, and then worked throughout the year, and then came onboard with staff a couple of years ago, and stepped into the role of Executive Director this summer. So, I'm excited to be here, be before you, and I welcome any questions throughout that you might have. At Arkansas Teacher Corps, we've always enjoyed a lot of support from the department, so I expect a lot of you know the basics of the program, but I'm excited just to kind of share where we are, the progress that we've made, and what our next steps are looking like. We're a fairly small program when you look at us compared to traditional ed programs and other non-traditional programs like Teach for America, but we like to think that we are serving a pretty vital interest, a pretty unique approach to community-based recruitment and retention for teachers, and something that we are really passionate about. Some weird formatting, so I apologize. The PowerPoint is probably not going to be super cooperative. So, just a reminder of our mission at the Arkansas Teacher Corps, we're really seeking to recruit, train, and to support exceptional social justice-oriented individuals to serve as teachers. So, we're really looking to be reaching out and recruiting people who have a passion for their content, have a passion for the state of Arkansas, for the students of Arkansas, but may have never thought about education before graduating with a degree, or possibly even having worked in a career for fifteen, twenty years, and have decided that teaching is something they've always found a passion for. So, we seek to find these people that have this passion, provide them the skills and the training that they need to go into the classroom and to work with students, and to help fill the shortages that we know are evident in our schools across the state. So, our goals are twofold, to decrease those shortages, to get teachers into the classroom, but also to make sure that we have really high-quality teachers who are providing a high-quality education and increasing student achievement. Couple of our priorities, we're really focused on the Mississippi Delta, so we're placing more and more in schools like Lake Village, like Lee County, like Osceola and Blible. We're really aiming to recruit hometown applicants, people who are from these communities, who have lived there, who have worked there for years, and who are now seeking to give back in some way. That's also including a lot of teachers who might currently be working in those schools on waivers, or other district staff like peer professionals, who know the kids, know the community, but have never had the certification or the skills necessary to teach. I myself grew up in the Mississippi Delta. I went to Rivercrest School District in Mississippi County before graduating and going to school in St. Louis, and really never imagined myself coming back to Arkansas. And I hate to say that now in this position, but at the time, coming from a small farming community, I just didn't see a lot of that potential for myself. And it was really only through Teach for America that I came back to Arkansas and found my passion for education. So, when I think about programs like these, and like the Arkansas Teacher Corps, it's very personal for me. Replacing in schools that are being served by administrators that I grew up with, or that I've worked with as a teacher, or going through my own graduate programs since then. One thing, though, I like to celebrate about ATC compared to Teach for America, though, is that we are a program by Arkansans for Arkansans. We're local, we're not part of any kind of national network, and this program started as a partnership between the university, the Department of Education, school districts, and our external funders. As I've already mentioned, we provide a selective and accelerated program specifically for people who have a degree, a bachelor's degree or higher, and that have some kind of content-specific background and experience. And we only take fifteen to twenty-five percent of our applicants every year. So, it's a pretty selective program. Those that we do take, teach three years in a high-needs district, and at the end of that three years, they get both their standard five-year license, as well as a fifteen thousand dollar stipend that's paid out over the course of that three years. I apologize, this PowerPoint has gotten really wonky, for lack of a better word. So, this small graph in the top-left corner, you can't really see it. Essentially, the takeaway from this graph, as you can tell looking from the left as we move to the right, just shows you some of the growth of the program. We started pretty small in 2013-14 with our first cohort of approximately twenty teachers. We reached our full capacity with three years' worth of teachers in the 2015-16 year with approximately forty-five. Since then, we've grown to fifty-five teachers this year. One thing that you might be able to see is a little bit of a hump there on that top dark-blue line, where we actually ran into some organizational issues two years ago, where we outgrew our staff capacity. So, this slide is actually kind of merged with the next slide. You can see our staff structure, but one thing I wanted to highlight is, what we've realized is that we were putting teachers in the field, but we didn't quite have the staff capacity necessary to support them. And as I'm sure it comes to no surprise to you all, retention became a big challenge. How do we provide the level of support that our teachers need to be successful and to thrive in the communities and the schools where they're working? So, we took a step back, we actually took fewer fellows this year. We only took a cohort of twenty, whereas the past two years, we had taken cohorts of thirty-five. And we've hired additional teacher coaches to be in the field full-time supporting our teachers. In terms of the number of schools and districts, we've increased from approximately twenty to thirty school districts in the past four years, and we're looking to add another two to three districts this coming year. So, this pie chart that you can't really see, the largest chunk there, that lighter blue, actually shows the percentage of our fellows who stay in the classroom after their three-year commitment. So, one of the critiques that I think non-traditional all-star programs often get is it's a, you come in, you teach for a couple of years, and you leave. And that's something that we, a critique we like to be really mindful of. One thing that does separate ATC from other programs like Teach for America is that we have a three-year commitment rather than a two-year commitment. But beyond that, the fellows who successfully complete our program after three years, seventy percent stay on in the classroom. Another ten percent are moving on into educational leadership positions. They might leave the classroom to be some kind of instructional facilitator, an assistant principal, and a principal, et cetera. Another ten to twelve percent leave to go to graduate school, and another ten to fifteen percent leave for another career altogether. So, in terms of recruitment, as I've said, we've become increasingly focused on hometown applicants, on looking at the communities where we serve. So, I like to think about our recruitment strategy as this three-level pyramid. We started our base, the easiest applicant pool out there are recent college grads. So, we cover all of the colleges and universities, attend career fairs, we schedule classroom visits where we can go and speak to classes, to students, who might be in educational studies programs or others like that that don't lead to a certification. We're also really intentional with reaching out through dean's lists, and we send out thousands and thousands of emails every week for that. And we also provide summer internships where college students can actually come and work with us during our summer training and get some of that exposure to see if education and teaching might be something for them. That second level, career changers. We actually have, this past year, about thirty percent of our new teachers are career changers. We work mostly with the Arkansas Workforce Services in collaboration to identify those people, as well as Chambers of Commerce across the state. Our team's constantly presenting and partnering with the Chambers of Commerce in the communities where we serve to identify those people, as well as figure out other partnerships that might exist. And we also are intentional about recruiting former military personnel. And we've had a handful of veterans that have served with our program over the past couple of years. And now, this top tier, the smallest number, last year we actually had twenty-two percent of our twenty-three teachers were hometown applicants. They were already living and working in the communities where they now serve through ATC. Most of these were teachers who were in the district on waivers, so they were either in charter schools or on charter conversions, and our program has been one that has helped them to get into a pathway for licensure and certification. We've also been intentional with identifying, as I've said, the peer professionals or other district staff who know the kids, know the community, and then want to get into the classroom to teach. We're also working a lot with civic organizations like Kiwanis Clubs, Lions Clubs, as well as churches and other institutions like that in the community that have that word of mouth, and that can help identify really strong applicants. And lastly, we're working a lot with the Educational Service Cooperatives and the new recruitment and retention specialists that they've hired this year. So, this graphic is a little hard to read in this form. Just want to highlight a couple of facts about our 2018 cohort. So, this past year, we took twenty-three fellows out of over a hundred and fifty, so it was an acceptance rate of about fifteen percent. Of that, forty-three percent of the cohort are people of color. When we look at statistics for the state, statewide, our teacher workforce is only ten percent roughly people of color. When we look at the school districts where our teachers work, our partner districts are approximately thirty percent people of color. So, we're very intentional with diversity when we're recruiting and training our teachers, and we're really proud of the fact that we're helping to provide the support in this pathway for people of color to be teaching in schools that are, again, have a majority populations of students of color. Another great thing that we celebrate, sixty-five percent of our fellows are from low-end communities themselves. Sixty-one percent are first-generation college students. So, these are people who can really connect with our students on a deep level. They've been through some of the same struggles, they have stories to tell, and they can really not only connect with students on content, but connect with them on those, the life struggles that it takes. Again, thinking about myself as growing up in Wilson, Arkansas, a town of nine-hundred, and just needing someone to connect with who had been through that experience before. Thirty-five percent have advanced degrees, and fifty-five percent are in the top twenty-five percent of the ACT and SAT, so high achievers in addition to being diverse. Last year, we accepted a hundred and fifty, or we received more than a hundred and fifty applications for fellowships, and we received over two hundred requests from schools for teachers. So, taking twenty-three teachers in no way meets the need. That's a really small number, and some that we're continually pushing for, how can we accept more, how can we place more to meet both this need and this interest? And as I've said, we've been really mindful for what it's going to take in terms of our staff capacity and organizational capacity to support them effectively. We don't just want to put bodies in classrooms. We want to make sure that we're providing teachers that are going to provide a really high-quality education. So, in terms of the criteria for our partner schools, something you might be interested in, when we look at whether or not we're going to partner with a new school, we're looking at schools that have over seventy percent of students who qualify for free or reduced lunch, schools that have over sixty percent of their student population being from a racial or ethnic minority, schools that generally have ten percent or higher teacher vacancy rates, and then schools that are performing below the state average in terms of achievement. We also consider things like whether or not they're rural, thinking again about the Arkansas Delta specifically. We look at the level of district support and community involvement. We're not going to work in a community that does not want us there. We're all about collaboration and going where that support and that collaboration will be possible. And we also look logistically, thinking about how close are they to other fellows or schools where we place. We've made a strategic move in the last few years to cluster our fellows in schools where they have that peer support, and also where we can get to them easily. It's a little hard when you've got one teacher in Texarkana, and one teacher in Blible, and you're trying to travel six hours between them to see them. So, we cluster them in areas that just makes it possible to be there and be present with them more often. So, in terms of the districts served, this is the map. So, you can see that we're mostly in the Delta. Try to read off somewhere, in Blible, we're in Osceola, West Memphis, Forest City, Lee County, Palestine Wheat League, Clarendon, Pine Bluff, Dumas, Dermott, Lake Village, Strong, Hope, and in the Littlerock area, we have some fellows in the Littlerock School District, the Pulaski County Special School District, Jacksonville North Pulaski, Scholar Maid, and Jacksonville Lighthouse. In terms of our support, we're really focused on the level of support that it takes and the training for our novice teachers. So, we start with a seven-week residential training before they've ever stepped foot into the classroom. This happens the summer after they're accepted to the program. This past year, we stayed on campus at Arkansas State University in Jonesboro, and then actually bussed over to Osceola High School and Osceola STEM Academy, where they taught grades five through twelve for summer school. That's followed up with more than forty hours of professional development throughout the year, and that's a combination of in-person events in Littlerock, in-person events in their community, online virtual events, and then self-paced development like book studies and micro-predentals. That's also coupled with over forty hours of classroom coaching, where an ATC staff member actually goes to their classroom and works elbow-to-elbow with them, either observing a lesson, giving feedback, planning together, looking at student data, anything like that, anything that they might need for their unique classroom. And then ongoing collaboration with both the district, thinking through, how can we best collaborate with instructional facilitators and mentors onsite so that our teachers are getting consistent feedback, as well as the co-ops who are now providing the novice teacher mentoring for the state, and how, again, do we coordinate to ensure that aligned support? So, in terms of our development, I was going to show you the graphic that summarizes sort of the competencies that we focus on. The big things, I think this list covers the big things. We're increasingly focused on student equity and professionalism, getting our teachers to understand that they are professional educators, and that this isn't a temp job, this isn't a Band-Aid, that they are educators, and focusing on what it means to be in the profession as such. Our development emphasizes cultural competence, thinking about, we're a diverse group of teachers, working with a diverse group of kids, and those cultural competence skills are very important. Emphasizing high expectations, and what it means to set and maintain those high expectations with students while providing the support and the scaffolding that it takes, when unfortunately, our students are often multiple grade levels behind. Focusing on developmental appropriateness, highlighting both the laws and the strategies around students with special needs, English-language learners, focusing a lot on differentiation, and again, that intentional scaffolding. A lot of focus on students as individuals, as well as the whole child, thinking about not just who the student is and how they're performing when they're in the classroom in front of you, but what are they bringing from home? What are their strengths, what are their challenges? And what does that individual student need in order to thrive and succeed in the classroom? Also focusing a lot on student ownership and authentic performance. We've moved away from traditional multiple-choice, short-answer assessments, and we really work with our fellows to think about how they will assess performance authentically, through performance tasks, through community service, through projects in the community itself. And we're also really focused on engaging families and community members for projects that are going to have a real-life purpose outside of the classroom.
Let me interrupt you just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
What areas, I know they have the seven-week residential treatment and the forty hours of professional development in the classroom. Is there a particular area that you consistently find that is the most troubling for them as far as, you know, getting what they have to get used to?
Classroom management is always the struggle.
I was, I set you up.
I kind of saw that, that sort of coming. I would say within that, though, I think it often is just expectations. The thing that we find teachers struggle with the most is just getting out of the mindset of how school was for them. And so, a lot of times, we hear, "Well, when I was a kid, we sat there, we took notes." Or, "When I was a kid, kids were more respectful." It's like, "Well, okay, but you're not a kid anymore. Times have changed." And I think just that mindset is the thing that, once they get through that mindset, the skills come pretty easily.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? And I apologize for this mess of a PowerPoint.
We have it here, so.
Okay, great, y'all can see it. That makes me feel better. So, I think on this slide, what you're seeing are just a couple of the big-picture numbers. So, our fellows are engaging with a hundred and thirty hours of professional development throughout the summer. That would be just seat time in sessions. There's another twenty-ish hours where they're actually teaching with classes during summer school. Students get around fifty-five hours of seat time throughout the summer, and that's led to forty-five credits, graduation credits recovered this past summer. One thing that we're excited about with our partnership in Osceola is that they did not have a structured summer school before our partnership. Their students were all working through the Apex Program for students to recover. So, kids were showing up, sitting on a computer, clicking through for three or four hours each day and going home. So, this partnership has not only allowed for our teachers to get that experience, but it's ensuring real-time instruction for the students during the summer. The graph that y'all can see on the right, the purple and gold, just shows the growth that students experienced from the pre-test that we administered at the beginning of the summer to the post-test that was administered at the end. Overall, that's about twenty percentile point increase on average, with the highest growth coming in areas like science and history, and lowest growth coming from subjects like ELA. Although, within the ELA category, when you break it down and look at their map, their NWA map scores correlated, we've actually seen a lot of growth in language, just not as much growth in reading. So, that's one area that we're looking at to, again, like partnership with initiatives like RISE, to focus more and more on literacy instruction. Last year, we had sixty-one fellows in twenty districts and twenty-eight schools. They taught over five thousand students. Of those sixty-one fellows, twelve of them served as remediation tutors after school. Eighteen of them sponsored some kind of student club or organization. Eight of them coached some kind of student athletic team. Ten were team leaders, either department, grade level, content area, school improvement, or school leadership team. Six of our fellows wrote classroom grants, and one was named the District Teacher of the Year. Oh, great, thank you. It's a little easier, and I can see the same thing that y'all can. So, we look at the numbers, we know that we're putting people out there. One thing that we hold ourselves accountable to is making sure, again, that our teachers are not just bodies in classrooms, but they are performing at a high level. And we hold ourselves to a rigorous external evaluation every single year. And there's three components to this evaluation. We conduct classroom observations where we're actually looking at videos of classrooms of our fellows and then non-ATC colleagues in their schools. These are looked at by professors, this past year, from the University of Central Arkansas, who rate both videos without knowing who is who. And in that process, our teachers are actually found to perform as effective or better on Test Domain Two Classroom Environment and Test Domain Three Instruction. In terms of, we also administer student surveys to the students, where they can give us feedback on things like classroom relationships, content knowledge, high expectations, things like that. Again, this is students of ATC teachers, as well as students of the non-ATC teachers, and that was found, students rated our teachers significantly higher in the areas of content knowledge and relationship building. And then lastly, we also look at the ACT Aspire Scores for the school. And there's a multiple regression model that the policy wants to do that I don't fully understand. But when they run that regression, they find that our students are performing on par with the students of the non-ATC teachers. They're realizing similar levels of growth. Although, it's not statistically significant, there is some indication that we're actually performing higher in high school science. I was a science teacher, so I like to brag on that. Specifically, when you look at Test Domains Two and Three, our fellows are found to most likely be basic or proficient. So, they're all within one, two, three years of teaching experience, so it doesn't surprise us that we have fewer people at that distinguished level. But one thing that we are proud of is that these are people coming into the classroom really quickly and not performing at the same level as of unsatisfactory. So, we like to see that, we're getting them in there, getting the skills they need to. So we like to see that, we're getting them in there, getting the skills they need to at least be basic right off the bat. So, in summary, we've seen a twenty-four percent increase in the number of teachers in our program since the 2015-16 school year. Over seventy percent who complete the program remain working in Arkansas schools. Over forty percent of ATC fellows are from a racial or ethnic minority. Over fifty percent of 2018 fellows were career changers or hometown applicants. The part that I skipped this earlier, but one thing that the Office of Education Policy has found in their research is that, on average, schools around the state report six applications per teaching vacancy. When you break that data down for the schools where we serve, our partner schools are only receiving two applications on average per vacancy. And sometimes those applications are ATC fellows that we've sent them. So the need is very great for them. Our fellows go through over three hundred and fifty hours of professional development throughout their three years in the fellowship. Over fifty-five percent of them serve in some kind of leadership position in their school, and our fellows are performing on par with their non-ATC peers while also being rated higher by their students. And then looking ahead, we continue to, we plan to continue growing. We aim to increase the number of teachers in schools served by fifteen percent next year. We're expanding placement of teachers in the Delta by thirty percent over the next two years. We're expanding recruitment of STEAM teachers as well as hometown applicants, strengthening partnerships with districts and co-ops. We're starting the process of creating a new advisory board and engaging stakeholders at all levels in the creation of a strategic plan to guide the program for the next five years. And at the teacher support and development level, we're exploring emotional resilience to not only keep teachers in the classroom, but help them to find their wings and thrive, not just survive. And if you are interested, our applications are live. Our first deadline is the end of this month, November the first. People can apply by clicking that big red button at the top of our website. And if schools need teachers, there's a link to submit a survey to tell us those placement needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. I'll see you, sir, over here, Ms. McFetrich, do you have any questions? Ms. Newton?
Thank you for coming. Is there any way that you could go bigger faster? Because you are meeting a need and it sounds like you're meeting it so well.
I think that it is possible to upscale the training and support model. It would just take a lot more staff infrastructure. So I think the biggest growing edge that we're at now is just funding for staff. We often find a lot of funding for direct expenses in terms of training and support, but not as much support for building out that staff-level infrastructure.
So, could you talk a little bit through the three-year commitment? Which, when I talk to twenty-two-year-old students, sounds like a lifetime. Sounds like a lifetime to me, three years sounds like a long time. Have y'all talked through the benefits and detriments of that compared to other programs?
We have. I would say, with the three-year commitment, when we look at the retention data, the majority of people that we lose, I want to say sixty percent of the people who eventually leave the program, leave in their first year. So generally, we find that there are people who, maybe after that second year, don't return for a third year because they've met someone and they're following them out of state, or they're getting married and moving into a different phase of their life that they hadn't anticipated. Otherwise, when we look at it, most of the people who are going to persist through the program, it doesn't matter if it's two years or three years. And so, from that perspective, we would rather have a teacher in a school meeting that need with the school and also having multiple years to be building that craft and learning the skills that they need rather than to and done.
And it does appear that you've got plenty of folks applying for the positions you have, but especially if there wasn't upscaling of the program, that could start to be a little bit more of a challenge.
Definitely. And I think, I think eventually, if we were able to upscale, we would be interested in maybe looking at different levels of commitments. So when we think about the stipend, I think some people would be fine with a two-year commitment and ten thousand dollars, where some people might want to do three years and fifteen thousand dollars. So I think we could get creative if we were able to upscale in that way.
So, a way to solve that, following someone out of state, I understand that it works pretty effectively, is you actually have mixers to set them up with someone in the community. Dr. Moore, is that, that same work pretty well? Yeah, seriously, though. You came from TFA, if I understand that correctly, okay. As a teacher, or were you in the TFA organization as well?
As a teacher.
Okay. So, as we have seen over the last several years, the placements from TFA in Arkansas go down substantially. What feedback are you getting, if any, from schools calling you to say, "Hey, we don't have TFA anymore, can you help us?"
I would say that we've been hearing that a lot, particularly thinking about schools in the Delta. So I think there's a lot of schools, for example, so I taught in Helena, West Helena, at Central High School with TFA. That's a placement that I believe they're still placing at, but not as highly as they used to. And that's been one school that we've heard multiple times over the past few years wanting more fellows. So it's definitely, throughout the last few years, as TFA has shifted some of their placements more towards Literarch and now with their new merger, and who knows what that placement strategy will look like moving forward. It definitely, we are seeing a greater need in the Delta in particular.
Yeah, I think we're down to six, Dr. Pfeffer, is that right, six or eight school districts where TFA's placing? Six, yeah. So considerably fewer than where we were just a few years ago. And it gets, kind of gets to Ms. Chambers' point, if, you know, the opportunities for ramping up, obviously, are districts until we get back to that point where we hope to be of the pipeline issues and solving those. Actually, this is one of those ways to do that. So, I guess it would be maybe worth considering, you know, conversation of, in the absence of the TFA solution, what are the other solutions? We're having to have those conversations internally. And so, it's, just to let you all know on the board, that's something that is really impacting the Delta districts, is that lack of TFA. So, whatever can be done to fill that need, I think we would be interested in developing conversations or continuing conversations, because obviously, we've worked well with you all for a number of years.
And one thing that we have done, and this goes back to Ms. Chambers' question, in the interim, knowing, recognizing our limits, one thing that we are trying to be strategic and intentional about doing is working more closely with the co-ops. So, for example, Crowley's Ridge and the Great Rivers serve the largest percentage of our placement communities. And so, thinking about, even informally, how can we work with them to pass along lessons that we've learned from training or for support and from development? And then hopefully, maybe that can lead to some kind of more formal partnership as well. That's been an area that we're trying to get the word out, get superintendents on those boards really aware of our program so that if TFA's not an option for them, they can reach out to us.
And since you brought up the co-ops, you know, we recently moved the teacher mentoring program into the co-ops. And are you, do your teachers participate in that?
They do.
Okay. And what's the feedback on, that you've heard, have you heard any feedback on that?
I haven't heard too much. I think last year was just a learning curve for everyone. And so, I would say the feedback that we mostly got from teachers was just, I think they got, they were more confused by just like what were expectations from ATC versus what were expectations from the co-op or from their school. And so, everyone was just navigating kind of that new structure. I really haven't heard as much this year. But I do know from conversations with the co-ops that we're approaching this in pretty similar veins. So more, less, less FaceTime and sit and get, more of the informal, online networking, more of the book studies, more things like that. So we're doing similar things, I know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I'm on this mission to decrease teacher absenteeism. Do you keep any records about your absentee rate and how it compares to teachers who go through the typical licensing program?
We actually don't. That's a fascinating question. So the reason that we don't is just because our teachers, like, we don't employ them, so their districts employ them. But that would be a fascinating question that I'm sure we could dig into.
And in that same vein, are you able to do the majority of your PD in non-school day so you're not pulling them out of the classroom?
Our PD is completely outside of school time.
Good for you.
So we do, this year, we're doing three six-hour Saturday events throughout the year. We actually just had our first one last weekend at Baseline Elementary here in Literarch. And then, in addition to that, we've been doing two-hour workshops after school, actually at the schools where they teach.
Thank you so much for handling it in that way, good presentation.
You're welcome, thank you.
Ms. Williamson, Dr. Moore?
I'll just say, it's great to see you today, having worked with the program at its beginning. I haven't really caught up, and so it's great to see the increase of teachers, echo comments of others. I will ask, though, how supportive are your teachers by the districts? I know we hear, we've heard a lot of teachers that are on waivers, so they have no external support like your teachers do. Are you finding that those teachers that have been on waivers or your teachers you're placing are being supported to them, particularly in that first year?
I mean, I think like with anything, the support varies from school to school. For the most part, I would say our teachers do have pretty solid support. I think in some places, they're actually getting too much support, and we actually have that issue of conflicting feedback where our teachers are like, "Well, I've heard four different things this week from people, like, what do I actually need to focus on?" So sometimes, they're getting too much information and we have to help them kind of sift through it and figure out what they're actually gonna work on. But for the most part, I would say there is support. If anything, I think sometimes it's easy to think of ATC as the sole responsibility for our teachers. And so, there are some districts where we do have to be a little more intentional with just having that conversation about what the partnership looks like and what our expectations are for the district and what their expectations are for us. But for the most part, I think everyone recognizes that we're in this together and ultimately, like, students are the only ones that get impacted if we're not working together.
That makes sense. One other question I thought of earlier, actually. So if y'all have probably over a hundred people per year that are not being accepted into your program, do y'all have any sort of track of what those people are doing, if they're still going into education through other routes?
We don't track them to see where they do eventually end up. We are really strategic, though, with pushing them towards other programs. So I know John Hall, our Director of Recruitment, will spend a lot of time on the phone with people who, even if we don't accept them, he'll advertise Apple, or he'll advertise other programs that are out there. Even things like, not teaching, but just civic, community service-oriented organizations like City Year.
Ms. House? Great. Any follow-ups? All right. Thank you, great, great presentation. Thank you so much for spending time with us, good to see y'all, and good luck. All right, next up, Ms. House, and I believe she has a guest as well. And I failed to mention to folks who didn't know, Ms. Dean was in it, well, she had a conflict this morning and could not be here. So I just wanted to note that.
Randy House, Teacher of the Year. I do have a presentation. Ah, that's me! So, I had the really cool opportunity, a month ago, to go home, literally home. I was born and raised in Batesville, and I was invited to come back to welcome their teachers into the new school year. And so, I got to stand in the cafeteria where I had my high school prom and address teachers, some of which were my teachers, sitting there. And I got to personally thank them, and it was a really awesome moment for me. And I got to really interact with the superintendent, Michael Hester, and learn about something really cool that he's doing in the district. In fact, the governor was there to recognize the district, so I'm gonna have him come up and share about that.
Well, it's great to have Randy again. We are so proud of her, the 2018 Teacher of the Year from Batesville, and it was great to have her back. We got the one-of-a-kind story, the only story she could ever tell about her childhood and the teachers who raised her. We got that special story on our August fourteenth kickoff. And it was a day of inspiration and emotion, and we were just a perfect kickoff for us. And so, we were great to have you back. She's in our local Hall of Fame as well. And so, we were excited to have her tell her stories and to relate to, about the relationships and the things that teachers do and how they inspire. And so, we're excited for that. And this is my second year at Batesville. On the first year, we started our strategic plan, and our motto is "Students First." And to put students first, attracting and retaining teachers, as you've been listening to this morning, is our first goal that we've established. And so, we were looking at our efficiencies, about the things we could control, and we decided to reduce our footprint. We had over twelve campuses, and our goal is to get down to eight campuses. And then, in that conversation, energy came up. And so, when we looked into our energy audit with Integrity, we initially came out with the state's largest energy waste efficiency program, five-point-four million, and the state's first solar panel project. And so, we are excited about that because, number one, we're trying to find money to attract and retain teachers, that's what it's about. And so, through that process, we've been able to look at ourselves and make a lot of decisions that were overdue. And then, we were able to do a lot of things and come together about, from listening to each other, of things that we needed to do to project into the future. And so, we're excited about the solar panels and the things that could go on. A lot of people do efficiency or waste reductions, but we went on the offensive with the solar panels in that this is a seven-hundred-and-fifty-kilowatt project. What you see there is about two football fields of solar panels that serve in two capacities. First, a functional capacity, we had no shelter on, when you're walking over two or three football fields along to get into the building or get to the gym. We had no shelter from sun or rain. And so, we said, "Let's make it functional as well as efficient." And that's where we come up with collaborative innovation. And we had a decision to make about whether to cover the panels there, because they're not exactly waterproof. But we decided that it's more important for students to stare up into this technology and to think about being the collaborative innovation it takes for now and in the future. And it's one of the reasons we invited Commissioner Key to our retreat to speak on collaborative innovation to our leadership, because we think he represents, for the state, that innovation, the efficiencies, the trying to get through the bureaucracy to combine funds to be able to make things better. And so, we were excited to have that time with him, and I know he's excited about these kind of things as well. But we're, we thank you for the time to be here, and there's a lot of exciting things happening there. And we're just proud of Randy and all that she's done. And I will tell you, she made us all glad to be in education.
Folks, questions now, or do you have any? Okay. What, any questions?
I'm curious, so, okay. In terms of kind of the estimated amount of savings, and I know these are tricky to estimate, but both in the combination, both the consolidation of the buildings as well as the the energy savings, what kind of savings are y'all looking at?
Just on the energy alone, we are guaranteed two million. It was a five-point-four-million-dollar project. We're guaranteed to save seven-point-four million in just our energy costs alone. And so, and I asked the Integrity, I said, "So what happens if you don't make your bill?" They guaranteed that we'll have that savings, three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars a year savings. And they said, "Well, we'd just add more solar panels." We're at about fifty percent capacity, seven-hundred-and-fifty kilowatts is about half of what we use in electricity. And so, what that tells us is that if we wanted to pursue net zero in our utilities, where we were using that money to attract and retain teachers, that we have room in the next twenty years to pursue net zero by being on the offensive. They guarantee these solar panels are ninety-six percent as efficient thirty years from now as today is when they've installed them. So that's what's kind of changed. So that's what's kind of changed about the things. Integrity has not paid a utility bill yet, so they met and matched all their guarantees. And in our footprint reduction, we think we're, our goal is to have a million a year. But we like Integrity, that's what we tell folks. But I'll tell you behind, behind closed doors, we think we can get to 2 million a year when we get down to eight campuses. So all in all, in a 20-year period, we would hope that represents some 42 million dollars in savings.
Dr. Hester, it's good to have you with us today. So who is your utility, who's, who's your power company?
Entergy.
Entergy, okay. What kind of interactions did you have to have with them? The reason I'm asking is that people are hearing about what y'all are doing and now they're asking us, kind of getting into some details that frankly, I don't have the information on, but we just say, call Dr. Hester. But what was their interaction and how did they respond to this project?
To save as much money as we did, you have to have really old stuff. And so like when Bentonville asked us this week about, you know, I said, well, first of all, how old are your facilities? And so the reason we had enough money to do the canopy and the pavilions and that one from the gym there is just massive. And, and we, we have tournaments and all that, picnics and things out there is the plan. But you've got to have enough money in a lot of ways to gain that big of a, of a resource. That's why we're the state's largest is we had a lot of old things that just needed replaced. We had 62,000, over 62, 6,200 light fixtures that we retrofitted. Hundreds of water faucets, hundreds of single window panes, over 80 HVAC systems. So, so it was massive and it's why it was the state's largest. And so on the waste reduction, you have to have a lot of room for that. Now, if you've built a lot of things like maybe in new areas like Bentonville and all, the, the side that they would probably be interested in would be the solars to go on the offensive to try to reduce that utility bill and expense they've got now. And the legislation that allows districts to pursue that energy was huge for us. Because then we didn't have to go add that to our tax base and seek the public. We were able to do it through the legislation and again, it's a streamline that our board with their visionary collaboration, innovation ideas was able to pursue. So what I would say is if on the waste side, you've got to, you've got to have the audit and to see where you're at and what fits you. And then on the solar side, this is, that's over two football fields long there in that loading and unloading zone. It feels, with the feel of it now, it feels kind of like an international airport when you pull up. I mean, it is, it is impressive. And so what I would say is on that side of it, and then we're also, and we're going to share this with you, you're going to be with us in, on November 1st with our Leadership Arkansas, there's a curriculum too. And so our kids will take that collaborative innovation and they'll take, they'll get inside the numbers and the science of this project and use it for their projects. Because we've got another two acres of solar panels that's on the ground and we have sun trackers with them because that increases your efficiency about 25% when you track the sun.
And so, but Entergy did not have any issues at all? I mean, they were?
No.
They were encouraging or partners in this or just kind of, hey, let us know when you're ready to hook up?
No, they're partners. Now, we have waited about a month now to get clearance for them being on the ground with our field. And they said that this was new ground for them, for education. And we're probably three weeks behind because they're having to figure out some of the legal and environmental things that, that go with, for an educational setting. And so they told me that by the end of this week, they thought they would be through that with lawyers and bureaucracy of policies and legislation. So we're hoping to get started on the field and have some of that ready for you guys by November 1st when you're there to, to look at.
And that, so, well, just last, the also wanted to report, you know, Dr. Hester talked about the, you know, innovation that they're looking at, but it's not just in the schools. The community is very involved as well. Although we, Dr. Pfeffer and I had to be at ed committee meetings, they actually came to visit with our team, members of the community, and they're trying to create opportunities for students through access to more concurrent credit courses and things like that. But it's not being driven solely from the schools. When you think about Batesville, they've got UACC Batesville, they've got Line College, they've got a number of entities up there in the business community that's, that are very active. So I, I think they're good, that you all are a good example of how you can bring all of the entities together to, to really push the traditional norms of what's available for students. So I just wanted to say to my board, with you standing there, how much we appreciate the work y'all are doing.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys.
So is the point person that you need to speak with at Energy, is that based on region? Or is there a point person at corporate that people would need to contact?
Michael Parker is our point person at Integrity.
Oh, okay.
And he would be the one I'd start with.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question now. It sounds like a lot of your end goal is to have savings for teacher recruitment and retention. Is, is money your biggest challenge to that or do you have, what are other challenges you have?
Yes, it was because our footprint was draining us. You know, we'd inherited three different districts over the years. And so it was literally taking us under. I mean, it was like inheriting a garage full of things from someone and, and then you've got to go through it and you've got to get rid of it and it's just, it's a drain on you that's not really helping you. And so we've had to work with our communities, move the properties off of our books and even inside our town. We've got our preschool building that we're going to move into next year out to an elementary school that we had emptied this year to get it ready. And so we are just trying to say, you know, a lot of times everybody kicks the can down the road trying to just hope it goes on. And we just said, it's not going to happen unless we get involved. Our board was committed to this, that we've got to be efficient and we need to be able to look our teachers in the face and say, we are doing everything we can. And so a footprint reduction that also led to this energy efficiency visit was what we're saying, we're doing everything we can do. And it's been exciting. We're, we're also, I've got a record enrollment for the second year in a row. It's producing a lot of excitement.
Can I follow up on, on Dr. Moore? In terms of the savings, I mean, is, in the strategic plan, is most of those, that savings, is it just, is this just, you know, a deficit you wouldn't have had or is it, does it create this possibility for investment in, in teacher pay and, and teacher recruitment?
Well, you know, just first, we got rid of the Cushman property, to the city of Cushman. They're going to use it for their economic development. We serve as advisors to them. With that, we donated that to them. And just in that property alone, you know, that's 23 acres and nine buildings that was on our books. We got a $10,000 check immediately just on the insurance it takes to cover once that got off our books. So each month, and you imagine that comes three other campuses and another building. So each month, we are, we're recognizing that. Now, it takes this year to start realizing that savings, but we knew that if we could move these things, it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars to the district.
Yes, I think it's important for communities all across the state to understand that decreasing your footprint, but at the same time still serving students and freeing up money, whether it's through energy or closing or whatever. Because sometimes I think communities think that there is some hidden motivation or it's racially motivated or motivated against people who don't have funds or whatever. As opposed to, we're just trying our best to come up with a footprint that can best serve our kids and pay our teachers as much as possible. So I appreciate the effort you made and I'm sure the PR work that you had to do there in your community to help them see that. And I understand you work closely with your co-op too, so that's, that's a great thing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
This is super exciting and, and I can just imagine the teachers in your districts getting excited about the, the educational possibilities that they would have from, you know, elementary all the way through high school to be able to use these to teach some real world lessons. And so what kind of support have you given your teachers to be able to find those lessons and to be able to find ways to incorporate this into, to the classrooms?
Well, Integrity has an entire, what they call the track program. And they've got about six or seven tracks in just all areas, whether it's art, science, math, English, that they bring in and train our teachers. And so we've got elementary and secondary right now training so that when the solar panels are completed, second semester, they can do the field trips, they can start crunching the numbers and talking about how that science, that innovation and what you can do then with other resources, once you create that kind of collaborative innovation. So we'll roll that out. We're being trained right now. We'll roll that out second semester.
That's exciting, so exciting. Was there grant money available? Is that how you got started on this?
No, that was just, it was just through the legislation to sell the bond issue, to, to sell the bonds on the market that we were able to enter the, the state allows you to, the savings that you are guaranteed. They let the, you go, that is your collateral, that makes it where it's a solvent type of situation for you. And you're able to take on that bond or that loan as a district. They guarantee they'll make the payments and you'll make the savings. So really it has kind of a net zero effect on costing teachers any money or the district. And in fact, when they say, we're very conservative, that the numbers will be better, then we're sitting there going, okay, so on the optimistic side, we may have more money because of this project. And we think we will.
Wow, that's, it's wonderful. So I, I really am so proud for your community and your district. So, so I'm really excited to see what happens with this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to congratulate you. There's such a cool factor here for the students, for the community and to some of the comments and questions that have already been posed. It sounds like your community is, is maybe somewhat unique. But what I was going to ask you is if you had any words of wisdom to offer in, in application to other communities about how you went about consolidation in and of itself is a tough thing to, to talk about sometimes. Because communities don't always see it as a, as a, as a strength strategy. It feels like we're somehow pulling back. How did you approach the community and getting them excited about that so that you could actually build and focus and be, and be stronger as a result?
We had 32 listening tours and probably over 150 pages of single spaced notes from where we told them that, you know, we are, there's a national teacher shortage. We are competing for teachers. We're the lowest in 5A in the state of Arkansas in teacher pay. So we put facts and data in front of them so they would understand our logic and reasoning or help us find solutions to these things. And so when we'd say we're, in the, in the Independence County, we're four out of five in teacher pay. In, in 5A in the state, we're the, the bottom. Well, that was shocking to a lot of people, especially a lot of people used to have went Batesville as number one. And they were going, really? And so it was a, it was a dose of reality. And then once they did, then they started understanding our reasoning and helping us with acceptable solutions that they could help us with. And you know, it's emotional. We had, we had, when we shut down Central Elementary so we could move our preschool over, you know, rightfully so, they did an awesome job with kids. And they were an A in their, their ratings with their test scores. And so I had people going, you're shutting down an A school? And I said, yeah, no, that really sounds bad. But, but the parents, we met with them, we talked with them, we kept reasoning. And we kept saying with each, we just said, every child, you tell us what it is you want from your child, whether it's that teacher to be with them, that program, that culture, and we will work with you. And we made sure that every teacher and every student got their first choice on the request of moving. A lot of people worked to make that work out.
All right. Ms. final point?
This happens to be my wheelhouse because I live up there. But before he came, Cushman is a very old and proud community. When they, their numbers fell and they were not able to offer kids see opportunities, the, the school district did work with that community as well. And because they're all up there participate in choice, then the kids who lived on the, sort of the Melbourne Mount Pleasant side of that could come there. The others could come. There was transportation. There was, you know, let the kids tour the schools that they'd be going to. And the kids adapted very quickly, the, the parents a little less quickly. But it, it really has and it was a win for everyone up there. And that's a community that's, what is it, like 13 miles from, from Batesville to the school, but not 13 miles for the kids who lived on the periphery. But, you know, everybody adjusted. They figured out how to do homework on the bus and all that thing. So it, it was really thanks to the administration and you now, it, it has worked out great for kids.
We met with the city and the fire department had a need for a facility. Plus, we brought in our school's architect to help them with some ideas for economic development for their town. And because we want them to grow too. We want them, they're still part of our district and we need their support in future endeavors. So it's our interest for them to grow as well. So, and they've got a really nice plan that everybody is willing to work with now.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Hester. Thank you, Ms. House for, for thinking of this.
Great. Great. All right. Thank you. Okay.
Next up is Chair's Report and I only have a couple of, of things. Ms. Wendell and I are, and have started the conversation about the, the Student Discipline Report that came. And she and I are going to get together and talk about kind of the buckets of what, which of those things are actions that the board can do some work on, which of those things are really legislative and which of those things are things that might be kind of best practices, but, but really don't require action. So she and I are going to visit on that. So we'll, we'll be reporting back on that task force report and, and where things go next. For, in addition, the, I think, just for folks' future planning, it appears that May may be a meeting where we travel. That's the small window that we have between the end of the legislative session and the end of school. And so that may be, that, so more to come, of course, on that. But just kind of be realizing that we may, we may be gone from Little Rock one day, maybe two days during that period. So, so we'll, we'll let you know about that as soon as possible. And she and I will try to, we know people have busy schedules and need to get that on their calendar. So we will, we'll work on that. So those are the things that, that I have. I think, I know that Ms. McFuttrid, you, I'll, I'll just go around and see if other folks have reports. I know you had one thing you wanted to mention.
Well, I was invited to and enjoyed visiting the Exalt Academy this week. And was quite impressed with the school and the children. And what came to mind during the visit, because she talked about childhood trauma and how many children in her school are traumatized and have this continuing stress. And there was a speaker I heard last spring at our local wellness committee, Dr. Alan Mies. I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce it, but he does an excellent presentation on childhood trauma. And I didn't know if this was something the board would be interested in hearing. But I gained a lot from his presentation and just having a better understanding of what our children are faced with every day and how that can really affect student academic success. So I'd like to maybe recommend that we hear his presentation. He's right here in town. He's with the Arkansas Department of Health. So apparently he does this internationally as well, so he's quite renowned. So, but anyways, just wanted to share that.
Okay. Well, that seems to tie well with some other things that we've been working on. And so what Ms. Wendell and I'll talk about, about that possibility and when, when it might, could be worked into our, to our schedule.
I do have his PowerPoint presentation, so if you prefer, I could share it and then maybe you could decide if that's something that, that everyone is interested in. maybe you could decide if that's something that, that everyone would be interested in.
If you get that to Ms. Wendell, and then she and I can use that to, to discuss.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Newton, anything?
Just a couple of things this month, I was able to attend one of the family and community engagements, regional meetings, and very informative, very diverse group, and very pleased with how that's going. I know they'll probably talk a little bit more about that, but if you get an opportunity to go to one of your regional meetings, I'm sure that you've got the information about it, I would encourage you to do that. And also got to attend the announcement of the Teacher of the Year, the new Teacher of the Year from Central, I'm sure Randy will tell you more about her, but I, I think she's going to be awesome.
Great. Great. Dr. Hill, Ms. Tippers? Ms. T, do you think?
I was going to say this, but since she was talking about the, the mental health and, and the overall health, there's a group here in town that works with children whose parent comes from either homeless or from an abusive situation. And as a result of them taking in and, and doing their arms around the children, then this past year, eighty-four percent of their children improved or maintained their math and literacy scores, and ninety-one percent of those in the, in the pre-K five-year-old improved or mastered their literacy benchmarks. So it just goes to show that if we can get the, the help for the child that they need, the socioeconomic doesn't, isn't such a big issue as, as before.
All right. Ms. Williamson, do you think? Dr. Moore? All right, great. Okay, Commissioner?
Thank you, Dr. Barth. So a few items on my report. Last week, the governor announced his transformation plan, I think we emailed those materials to you all so that you could see what was being discussed. There will be, I'm sure you will get questions as you're out and about, and as the governor stated, you know, that, that's, that's his plan, now the legislation has to be developed, and obviously there will be a lot of details that need to be worked out. So, you know, how it impacts this board and the interactions between this board and, and some of the other operations that would be under the new Department of Education, we're, we're ways away from knowing that. The one thing that is, they did make clear is the higher ed coordinating board would, would stay intact and due to constitutional issues regarding the independence of higher education. So I will, as, as updates come available, I will certainly make those available to you all, and if you have questions that you get when you're out in the community around the state, feel free to give me a call, and if we have an answer, we'll get them for you. If we don't, it's just going to be, you know, these things will be decided in due time. So there, and as I said, there will be a lot of those types of things. We have, this is new for us, this fall, we are going around, you remember a couple of years ago, we did a ten-city tour, we're not doing another tour like that, but we are partnering at, at the invitation of the Arkansas School Boards Association, we are joining them on their regional school board meetings. So we have been to, had a group that went to Prairie Grove, we have been to Morelton, that it so far. So over the next several weeks, so there'll be a, a number of other meetings around the state. And we are going in, as we said, we want to stay committed to providing information and getting feedback on our ESSA plan, and as we implement that, those are the topics that we're going to be talking about. And then giving our school boards some information and knowledge so that they can then engage in local conversations about meeting the needs of their students in their districts. We're excited about that opportunity, and usually two or three of us are scheduled to go around, and, and they have a lot of regional meetings. How many are there? Fourteen regional meetings, so there are twelve left. And we are, we, our team is so good that they will continue to present in the middle of a tornado warning in the storm shelter. Right, Ms. Kaufman? Nothing holds us back. Another exciting piece of information I wanted to pass along is earlier this week, we had a team that went to Salt Lake City, to the Professional Learning Communities Institute, and as a part of that team, we had higher ed folks that went with us from our ed prep programs, and the goal is so that they can start looking at how, the possibility of embedding some of those concepts into their ed prep, so that when teachers come out, they have a knowledge or at least an understanding or, or some level of experience with knowing what that's, how that's supposed to look in a collaborative culture in a school. And they are very open. So far, the reports we have received has been fantastic. The idea of inviting our higher ed partners was Dr. Pfeffers, and so far, they, it's, it's been very encouraging, the conversation that has been generated. So Tina Smith continues to lead that effort with the Professional Learning Communities Project. We should have some, as you all know, later today, in about two hours, a little less than two hours, the ESSA school reports will go out, and now that that data will be public, we will start getting updates on that first cohort of the PLC pilot schools, to see what the impact has been, kind of some baseline data for those schools, so we're excited to see that. And in that vein, last week, Dr. Pfeffer and I also went to the Henderson Educational Renewal Zone, where they had a regional partners meeting, and they asked the Bismarck School District Team to present on what they've been doing, and they have been involved and engaged with developing the Professional Learning Communities process in their district for about five years now. And so as they're talking, I'm on my school info, pulling up their grades, and you can see it, I mean, it is apparent, they went from like B and C, and then they are now all three of their schools, elementary, middle, and high school are all As. And when you hear them tell the story of that process, and it was a process, you really get the sense of this is the right work, it does have the impact on kids that we expect it to have. So really excited about what they're doing. Also, Dr. Barth, you mentioned our, maybe going in May, there are other opportunities that we will invite you to, the Commissioner's Memo goes out today so that you have the opportunity to join some schools on student-focused, oh, just lost it, Stacy, student-focused study tours, thank you, student-focused study tours. Those are going to be opportunities to visit a school that has, that is doing work that is of high quality with respect to that student-focused education. And we'll be creating that, the Commissioner's Memo is out, and so if you take a look at that, student-focused study tours, it's out there, and get the details on what we're going to be doing and the, the schedule and the locations. So I'd invite you to take a look at that. And finally, we've been on hiatus a bit for developing videos, but we have one for you today, and Jeff, are you going to intro this?
Sure.
Come on up.
Jeff Dyer, Program Advisor for Teacher Recruitment and Retention. The Teach Arkansas campaign, you know, we kicked that off last February at our, my Impact of Tomorrow Summit, which is the high school conference for teacher cadet schools, which baseball has one, by the way, so that's another great thing that they're, they're working on. The last two years, we've been able to have about forty-five school districts, last year we had five hundred kids that came, so these are all kids that you're in, teacher cadets are the orientates to teaching, so they've expressed an interest in going into education. So we kicked the Teach, Teach Arkansas campaign off at the opening session that year, at that, last year, at that UCA, in February. But prior to that, you know, there was, there were a lot of meetings, a lot of folks to get added to this committee, a lot of great ideas, but when Gail and Kevin and Megan and myself were first talking, way, way before this ever became this big initiative, we are, the very essence of, and part of what we wanted to be able to do was talk about what teachers do every day, to articulate our message as educators and be able to convey that, and to showcase what teachers and educators do every day. And so this video series, of course, Gail and Kevin are just insanely talented, and so all I, the reason, I just kind of go say, hey, what about this? And then here they come back and they've already, they've put it together. So this first one, I think, will give you, will give you, is, you know, this is like the action movie that kicks off with a building blowing up, because this is really impactful. This is Anthony Alexander, it's on the Teach Arkansas page, you can go there and you can watch the videos, you can also see an episode profile that we'll put together on each one. This first one dealing with some of our goals and, and the things that we want to accomplish through the Teach Arkansas campaign, this first one minority recruitment, teacher recruitment, so there, it talks about that, it's two pages, the back page is, is kind of a bio on him, this is a gentleman that's, that's working to become a certified teacher, he's at Fair High School, and quite frankly, exactly the kind of person we want in our classrooms, so who wants to watch this?
Recruiting highly motivated and committed individuals into the teaching profession is not an easy task. Narrow the effort to focus on recruiting minorities, especially men, and the task may feel overwhelming. A bright spot in Arkansas's ongoing teacher recruitment effort is Anthony Alexander. He's currently an Alternative Learning Environment, or ALE, instructor at JA Fair High School in the Little Rock School District. A semi-pro rugby player and a single dad to a ten-year-old son, he's also a college student set to graduate in December. So what's next for Anthony? He wants to become a licensed Arkansas teacher. This is his story.
What inspired me to become a teacher, because when I was younger, I always had this one adult male, he was a black male, that looked out for me because I happened to not necessarily be a troublemaker, but I was a little busybody, always moving around, doing a lot of what I shouldn't do in the classroom, more so talking. And he always took the time out to pull me to the side, talk to me, steer me in the right direction. I gave teaching and helping kids a shot, I even left for a certain time period for like a year, year and a half, and that whole year, year and a half, I was gone from my kids, or like I call my babies, I was miserable, I felt like I was doing nothing with my life and I was just punching the clock and not serving a purpose. I feel like they see somebody that looks like them, in, in a setting that you normally wouldn't, because I come from where they come from, and I understand them a lot more. I, I do play international rugby for the USA Select South Team. Also, I'm a parent, I have a ten-year-old, he's named after me, but we call him AJ. He has some slight disabilities with hearing and things like that, so, you know, two times a week, I take him to speech therapy, just to make sure I keep him on the right path like I would any other student, because I really don't believe in disabilities, because anybody can learn, no matter what level you are. So I make sure, I tell my son that just because you have a disability doesn't make you disabled, you can learn. Kids are our future. If we can't guide them in the right direction or get them on the right track, how can we complain later on for what comes out of them and what comes out of our community if we don't get involved? We need teachers, just like we need doctors, just like we need officers, it all starts with us. Like, kids really don't know, to me, what they want to be without influences from teachers. If you have a day off or something, come volunteer, see where you can help out, all schools need volunteers as well, just like we need teachers, and blackmail teachers most of all, just get involved in any kind of way you can.
Wow, great job, team, Kevin, Gail, Jeff, oh yes, that's fantastic, thank you.
We'll continue with these approximately one a month, and what we wanted to do, instead of trying to have a, okay, we're going to go look for this type of this, we're going to, we're just looking for stories, and then we'll fit the profile to them, and just, and then being able to put those up and have those on that so that you can have more and more people that can, that can, that will appeal to, that they can relate to that person, and then they'll, we can give them, get more information to them, and hopefully that'll translate into the right kind of people going that we need to go into our classrooms every day. Do we have any questions?
Is that based on YouTube?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And what, what would it be on?
We'll, we'll send you the link.
Okay, okay, tweet.
Any other questions? Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you. February eighth, by the way, is, will be this year's Impacting Tomorrow Summit, and be again at UCA, so I'll make plans to come and attend. My goal is, we're going to try to have, I'd like to, we're trying to work the logistics of trying to get, I want to get about six hundred and fifty kids this year, we've got over eight hundred now across the state participating with teacher cadets, so I'd like to have about six hundred, six hundred and fifty at that conference, so put that down in the calendar. Thank you, guys.
Awesome, great. All right, that's my report.
I was, y'all were talking about going to release at noon, I got from a commu, a school district this morning, and they have already released to their entire community their exact scores, and they don't look great in some of them, because they've got some Fs and they've got some As, but they've already said to their community, here's what our plan is, here's where we are, we're not making excuses, we should have done better, and, and so the communities, I think, and the districts are really buying into, y'all are here to help us get better, and we want to make that communicated. They, they wanted to get ahead of the, excuse me, Cynthia, the new cycle, because they didn't want it to look like they were reacting, they wanted to look like they were proacting. So I was pleased to receive that this morning.
Ms. Newton?
I have kind of a follow-up to something the Commissioner said, I know you, you said that you were doing things to get the higher ed on board with PLCs, and they were really interested, is there anything that we can do along that lines with the science of reading to get everybody on board there?
Well, you know, we have, I think we've made great strides there, and some of the, the hiccups that you may have heard about, I, I believe they are just hiccups, they are isolated. Stacy has been doing a lot of work on that, Joan Luno has been doing a lot of work. Stacy, you want to come up and, and address that? And Joan, we may lean on you too, but there, I, I really do believe we're going the right direction there.
So Stacy Smith, I believe we're going the right direction too, it's just slow, I feel like we're moving a mountain, and I think we have moved it a few inches. Joan has done some great work, working on the competencies for higher education programs. So in the legislation that was passed two years ago, there was legislation about higher ed programs having science of reading within their programs. So the timeline, we've, we've done that, we've actually taken the competencies, Joan's worked with my ladies from literacy, she's worked with outside people that have come in, and we have rewrote the competencies for higher ed programs, that include science of reading, okay? So those will begin being implemented in teacher prep programs this next school year. All right, so what's kind of happening right now is the same thing that happened when we pushed Roz out in the beginning with K-12. When we first pushed out, we had a lot of teachers in our state who were experts in literacy and had been teaching reading for twenty-plus years, and all of a sudden, we were pushing out something saying, oh, there's research about how you can do it better. And so we had these experts and this group disagreeing. I, I'm the expert, I have a doctorate degree, a master's degree, what do you mean, I've been doing it wrong? And we had to have moments of, you know, intense professional development, difficult conversations, but now we're at that point of, oh, I see, how did I not know this, and continued learning, and people are, are taking hold of it and running with it in K-12. So I just think that's kind of where we are right now with higher ed. We just have to have some of those conversations and, and recognize that these folks have dedicated their lives and their professions on teaching teachers how to teach. There, no one's out to say, teach somebody how to teach wrong. It's just, we just now have to have some discussions, we have to have some partnerships and professional development, that we're coming together and just having some honest conversation. And I just think that's kind of where we're at right now, is we're just at that crossroads with implementing these new competencies. We've had some universities who have been very willing, they've been calling our folks saying, come talk to us. folks, saying, come talk to us. Um, it's just where we are. But I think that in a year from now, we'll be in a different place.
What's the process of making sure those competencies get implemented, I guess?
So that really kind of falls back on the higher ed institution. And Joan, you may have some comments about that, but it really, it falls back on them. But their graduates that they're putting out have to pass our science of reading assessment that was passed in legislation and that came before this board. And so this spring, we're going to have the first pass rates for that assessment. And I think that'll be something to watch for, um, continue to have discussion for, because everyone's going to want to increase that pass rate. And we want to continue as a department to not only support teachers coming out of programs in how to best teach reading, but also our current teachers in the classroom. I hope that helps.
Yes.
And there is another component in the law, um, in addition to, um, the requirement is by the 21, excuse me, 22, 23 school year. Um, they, um, each preparation program has to fully publish on its website in detail the program that they're, or the, let me read this here. Um, information describing its program to read. So that's where they're already getting that updated, and we have some that'll be implementing much earlier. The other piece, though, is that they have to include in their annual report to us, which starting this year will roll out as an educator preparation quality review report. They're going to have to, um, a description of their program to prepare educators to teach and the scientific instruction of reading. So that will start even this year in what they're submitting to us. And, uh, we will make that part of that quality review program. And if they don't have a program where they've, that where they're aligning it to the competencies, then that creates an issue as we review their programs and could cause the program to have to come back for a full review and possibly not be, um, sustained.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. Um, on the, Commissioner, on the, on the PLC front, um, at some point, when, when makes sense to you, I think I, I would appreciate some report on kind of the, on PL, on, on that issue, on the pilot, um, because obviously pilots are about figuring out what, what's working for the future, um, and kind of the, the, where, where that goes forward. Because it, PLCs, I get it at a very abstract level, but I, I'm still having some difficulty in terms of how that plays out in different, different school settings. And so if there's a time that you think makes sense for that, that would, that would be helpful.
No, we, we'd be happy to do that. And I think, uh, we'll, we could look at the timing of when Tina could come in, give us an update on that. Um, and, and I, I mean, we have books, all right? If, if you want to read, you know, some of the texts that we are, uh, leading, uh, our, our educators around the state in, we'd be glad to get those to you as well. Um, and especially, I mean, we, we've actually, um, we furnish books for our higher ed partners. Uh, Dr. Bob Aker, who is, uh, had been in a lot of positions at Middle Tennessee State University, um, authored this book, and it is about how do we do this in higher education and, and preparation for getting these teachers ready to go out. They also, we learned this week, they have a doctoral program, uh, in, at leadership centered around these concepts. And one of our institutions, maybe more than one, uh, went to him during the conference and said, send us this information, this is powerful. We want to know how we can do this. Henderson was one of them. Uh, how, how can we do this? And even talking about how they can partner with other institutions. Now, when you can start talking, getting higher ed folks to talk about partnering with other institutions, uh, in this age of competition and, you know, enrollment and all that, um, there must be something to it. And I think they really see the power in it. So we'll, uh, we can, uh, look at the schedule, see when that might be appropriate. And by then, maybe we'll have an idea of what, what the higher ed, um, part of this may start to look like. So are you thinking before the end of the year, in the spring? What, what are your thoughts?
Um, yeah, maybe December, maybe, I mean, just whatever, whatever works for, from y'all's perspective.
Okay, we'll take a look.
But, but, and, and obviously availability of key, key, key people as well.
Dr. Arthur, um, something that might, I don't know if it'll work with this or not, but something that helps me understand as a teacher is to see someone that's actually done it. And if Bismarck did such a great job, a, a process of implementing, maybe along with that, seeing them or whoever you think would be appropriate come and do a presentation of, you know, how they did it and, and the process and, and how it's affecting students.
That's exactly what I think, I think the comment-
Isn't that cool? Yeah. That would be where we go with mine.
But the, the combination of, of, of a team coming in and talking about it in a lived environment, but then also kind of where, where we're heading towards implementing the pilot and the something-
Well, and the, and the interesting thing is, it, it started with a high school principal at, uh, at Bismarck, who is now the superintendent at Washita. Um, and, um, you know, a chain of events that started with somebody's retirement, um, from Poet. Um, but, but it, it points to that, you know, things that can start and be successful in one district. Now he's in another district and he's saying, this is how we're going to operate here. Uh, that's how you get to that critical mass of, of schools and educators who are familiar, and not just familiar, but are, um, able to implement these concepts and working collaboratively. It just, it makes so much sense. Uh, we'll be happy to pull something together for you all. And I know, uh, Bismarck would, sure would be delighted to share their stories. It's, it was an impressive story.
My final question was, in terms of the legislative agenda for the department, or what, what is the timeline looking like for that in terms of?
It has been submitted to the Governor's Office, and, uh, we are awaiting final approval or any questions that may come up. Um, looking for Lori to see, there, oh, there you are. Uh, yeah, okay. So there, the Governor's Office is here. Uh, so, so we're, we're waiting to hear back from everyone after their review. So when we get that, we'll share that with you as well.
Perfect. Thank you all so much. All right. Um, now down to Task Force and Liaisons. Well, we start with the liaisons this time, just for something different. Um, and, uh, I'll start down at the bottom. Uh, Ms. Hook, anything else special, Ed?
Um, nothing at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then NASB, um, Ms. Newton?
We didn't have a GIC call this month because of the NASB meeting in, in, um, end of the month, so.
All right.
I don't have anything to do with it.
Okay. And so I'll be in Denver for the NASB meeting, uh, next month. Ms. Chambers also, you're on the Finance Committee and has been involved with meetings with NASB as well. So we've got some, uh, some NASB activity. I'll bring a full, full report back, um, in, in collaboration with Ms. Newton. Um, Ms. Chambers, anything on Human Resources? Okay. Um, Ms. Hook, anything on Public School Accountability?
Uh, Ms. Kaufman's going to do the presentation.
All right. Awesome.
Debbie Kaufman, Assistant Commissioner of Public School Accountability. Um, I'm going to take you to the website, arkansasedot.gov. We have some brand-new features, so if you'll follow along with me. Uh, first thing I want to highlight is that, um, here on our homepage, ESSA has a new home. Uh, it will be the permanent home. All of our old ESEA and ESEA flexibility documents have all been archived to one web page. They're still there, um, in case anybody's interested in reliving old history. Uh, but today, current, we have a new, uh, federal accountability, and it's front and center on our website. So it lived temporarily up here, uh, but it has moved to its permanent home, uh, on the, on the homepage. Also, MySchoolInfo has received a prominent link, uh, on the homepage. It's, was listed a little further down, so we've moved it up. Um, and people are hitting it like crazy this morning. I've kind of been looking at the, uh, the hits, and they're just going up by the hundreds. So they're ready for, uh, the new things that are coming today. I'm going to take you on the, um, ESSA page.
Ms. Kaufman, I'm, I'm just looking for, so where on the page is the federal school accountability?
So you may need to update your browser. Refresh your browser.
Oh, there we go. I see it.
Okay.
It was, first, my eyes were not seeing it, it was like a-
And, um, if you're scrolling on your phone, it really comes up very quickly.
Okay.
So, um, on the Every Student Succeeds Act, um, there's a new, a page that I'm going to take you to in just a moment. But I wanted to, um, highlight a couple of things first, on the informational documents page. You can get there by clicking on I, and going to informational documents, or going to the ESSA page, and then clicking on the informational documents. Uh, we moved MySchoolInfo link up to the very top, so, um, we're trying to put it everywhere to make it easy for everyone to find it. Um, so there's the link to go to MySchoolInfo, and we have a new two-pager that has very easy steps. And so what we've been telling state board members and everyone else, um, you can't break it, just start clicking, things will happen. Uh, MySchoolInfo is just, um, it's an awesome tool. Here are some really easy steps. If you need to print it out and let it, uh, lay it right beside you as you go through and start to pull up the reports, but we do want to make it very easy for all of our patrons to, um, examine school reports. There is a new letter to our partners in education from Commissioner Key. It went out yesterday in the Commissioner memo, and I encourage you to read it and share it with everyone else. Um, and then on number 24, uh, is the 2018 ESSA School Index Statistics. So we've got our statistical report already finished in PowerPoint form, and we always provide that both in PDF and PowerPoint, because educators, yourselves, others, like to take that information and put it into their presentations for different purposes. The other thing that I'm really excited about is down at the very bottom, and there's a series of quick videos that, um, our team, Dr. Bob led this. Dr. Bob, um, is one of our standards and system support specialists. He and some other members of that team have worked diligently on these little snippet videos. They're very quick, and we'll be posting those out in social media for the next nine days, because we have nine videos. Uh, but if you want to get ahead of, if you want to get ahead, we love people who like to get ahead. So, uh, if you want to go ahead and watch all nine, it just takes about, um, 15 or 20 minutes to get them done. They're that short, and, uh, they give a really great overview. So I'm going to take us, uh, now, back to our homepage, and, um, highlight the new thing that's showing on our website, and that is our Schools on the Move. So, Ms. Hook, you're right, we're being proactive with the news, we're making the news, uh, about all the great things that are going on in Arkansas public education. So, uh, there's a new website here that, um, gives a lot of information, and I'm going to kind of, I'm going to encourage you to read it. I'm not going to read it for you, but I'm going to give it my best to get out of there. There we go. And, uh, bring up my PowerPoint, because, um, we do have schools on the move, and that's what the news needs to be, that we have schools that are making tremendous progress. In fact, we have 275 of our schools had an overall improvement in their ESSA School Index. 275, it's pretty amazing. Um, on that webpage, we highlighted the top, uh, the top schools, the top improvements, but, um, it's just, it's really a challenge to move those overall accountability scores. So I, I just can't emphasize enough how important that is, and how, uh, we need to be talking to those, uh, schools. They're all very unique, and I'm sure they've all taken very unique pathways, um, and I'm sure that they're not settling with where they are, they continue to work very hard. In weighted achievement, and so remember, weighted achievement is using our ACT Aspire scores, our alternative assessments, and looking at our students that are close, got half a point, ready, was a full point, and exceeds was a point two-five. And so this tells you that they're moving their students, that we had many of our schools that raised their weighted achievement scores. And on this page, we have highlighted 10 schools that moved their achievement score. So if I just go over to just that indicator, weighted achievement, they moved their achievement score 10 or more points. It's, it's hard work, isn't it, Ms. Newton? It is. It's amazing. When we think about growth, um, we've read a lot of articles about growth, we've heard people give their opinions about growth, but what I want you to know today is 19 of our schools met or exceeded two standard deviations above the mean. That, that is, once, once again, Ms. Newton, I've used the word standard deviation math today. Um, that is exciting for anyone, um, in education, to know that you can move, that kids can exceed expected growth on average at a school level. That's tremendous. You might see that in a student or two, but to see it for an overall school, I mean, we need to stand up and celebrate. 158 of our schools raised a letter grade. Again, this is just amazing work in our schools. Three of our schools raised their letter grades by two letter grades. So it doesn't matter where you start, it matters where we finish. So I invite everyone to our website to start the celebration. Thank you.
Questions? Did you have questions? Elbridge, yeah. Ms. Kaufman? I think Ms. Chambers did have one.
First, congratulations and thank you.
That was a drop-the-mic moment.
Sorry.
No, and, and we should have cheered. Uh, that's such great news.
Thank you.
Uh, I just had a question in terms of the time horizon, um, and in terms of when we start and when we get information back, and it, and just kind of, um, if you could talk through, I think a lot of states right now, uh, I've got some questions this morning from another state's, uh, state board, asking about timing, about when, when we take tests, when we get information back, and when it becomes available to schools to act on. Could you just talk us through that just briefly?
I'll do the best I can, and I'll call in my partner to assist. Um, our students take the test, there's a window, uh, for their examination for ACT Aspire, um, April, May. And, um, we have the data back to us by July 1st. We then, uh, get to work, and, you know, I talked to you, you weren't here yesterday morning, we talked a little bit about, then we have a corrections window for reasons not tested, for any student that didn't either take the ACT Aspire or an alternative exam. As soon as those, uh, adjustments are made, so we're ensuring that every student is counting, um, then we go to work on putting together the weighted achievement and growth parts of this. What we've done is, uh, because we have cleaned up these timelines, and the way we've cleaned them up, we've got a lot of feedback from other states about how they had improved their timelines. And one of those is, um, asking our school districts to take the time they need during their cycle submissions. Take that time, like right now, we're right in the middle of Cycle 2 submission between October 1st and October 15th. Now is the time that they make their corrections. So once that becomes certified data, we don't go back and try to correct it again. It's, it's, when it's certified, you're saying that you've checked it, checked it, checked it, and it's right. And so we've taken out repetitive processes. And that's how we've been able to, uh, make this tremendous shift to give you this data six months early.
So that was a point I wanted to make sure that we underscored. While we always want to ensure that we are turning it as fast as we possibly and reasonably can, Arkansas and your process is, I think, quite a bit better than some of the other states. And that's what I wanted to acknowledge, because, um, at least this, in this particular example, they took tests in May, and they're not going to get the results until January. And they were very, very concerned about how long that was going to take before they could act on the information.
That's one thing that, it's, I think it's even in state law that we have to have our test results back by July 1st to schools. And so that's something that we, though, we, when we are doing our contracts with ACT for ACT Aspire, we negotiate what is the latest possible time that we can take the assessment in the year, to be able to get our results back by July 1st. And so that kind of puts us in that April, May window. Um, and then as far as the accountability reports and pulling all that information together, um, it's been pretty amazing work by this group to be able to pull all that together to get the accountability reports in.
Well, we knew it was good, but when you hear from other states, you, you realize you have a deeper appreciation for how good you're doing for us and for the kids. So thank you. So thank you.
I might add a second part is that our report card, remember, we, we have nested reports. So our Accountability at a Glance is that short, one pager, quick view. You go deeper into your ESSA School Index report, I mean, it really fleshes out the information in our accountability system. Then there's additional information that's requested under federal law and state law that's reported in our report card. And typically, our report card comes out by April 15th or sometimes on April 15th and that's because a lot of timelines fit into that. But I'm really excited unless a regent kills me, but we're really excited that we're going to build our report card as our data are available to us. So we'll, we're expecting to have a big portion of it ready around December and then the rest coming in the spring. Some, the reason we can't just build the whole thing is some of our data doesn't come to us until the spring. And so that, again, we're trying to get data to our public so that they can engage with our school districts, that they have the tools to do that. So I'm counting on all of you and everyone listening to talk to everybody they know and tell them that MySchoolInfo will have live reports at noon today and we're counting on everyone going there and sharing the good news with all of the patrons in the community.
Great. Thanks. Ms. Newton?
I just want to take a second.
You can't leave, Ms. Kaufman, we've still got more questions.
I just wanted to take a second to congratulate you and your team because just to get all this done in this short time, you know, I, it's been amazing and just congratulations on your hard work and, and it's very much appreciated by us, but I know also the districts, to be able to get this back in a timely fashion before where we would wait nearly a year before we got information from the previous year. And that's just not effective. And also want to congratulate the teachers and students of those, those districts that are making that amazing progress because that doesn't just happen by accident. That's a lot of hard work and, and congratulations to them also.
This is an agency-wide effort. Our Office of Information Technology, Research and Technology, Learning Services, everybody, educator effectiveness, I mean, it takes all of us to make this happen. But most importantly, it's because our school districts are so involved. And I shared with you yesterday how amazing they have been at helping us have the best data possible. So I think we're ahead of other states in having some pretty amazing data. Not just that we have a lot of it, but that we're just seeing it be more and more accurate all the time. So it's pretty, it's a, it's a statewide effort.
Great job.
So Ms. Kaufman, I do have one more question. So in terms of, and you may not be at this, this point yet, but in looking at the, at the, the array of indicators that come together in the, in the, in the scores, where, where, for those schools that did shift, where, where are we seeing them make their shifts? Is it primarily in, in achievement scores? Is it in growth? Is it, are, are the, are the schools that are really moving, are they moving in a lot of different places? Does this make sense?
Yes, it does make sense. We've not gone to that level of analysis yet. We had our final dataset Wednesday morning, so.
Why don't you have a yet?
We're feeling excited to have a webpage highlighting some schools. But we, I have put together a team of people that are going to evaluate our ESSA data. Dr. Alexandra Boyd, Renee is working on her team, working with Dr. Rollis' team and we're building our analysis, they call it something fancy, I don't know, I call it the framework of how we're going to evaluate our plan to see if it's working and to see what components are working. So stay tuned, we'll let you know. But we already know, I mean, if you're meeting, if you, if you've got a growth score of two standard deviations, things are happening.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just, you know, super curious about some of those other indicators.
Sure.
That's around the, the test scores to see, you know, what's going on with those.
Yeah, we're really interested to watch to see if schools begin to really focus because we already know just from our conversations with them that they're having really important conversations about students being on time with their credits. That's going to lead to better graduation rates. People are just, those, the SQSS things have just really made people pay more attention to the details. And that attention to details will pay dividends over in those big weighted areas, weighted achievement and growth. We know that, we expect that to happen and we're already seeing that, but I want to give you a statistical report about it as well.
Well, I was gonna, so Deb mentioned Dr. Boyd and Renee, but, yeah, so really, some of our changes in our structure in the department is driven by, one, what we know we didn't have that we need, and that's program evaluations and driven by a lot of the questions you've all been asking us. It's like, okay, how do we know if we're making progress? And Dr. Eric Flowers is someone else we brought on board that's going to be engaged in, in this so that we can dig deep and find out where the, those impact areas are. And one thing I wanted to point out too is we are seeing in just a few months, a shift in the conversations that are taking place at schools. You know, when we first rolled out SQSS and looked at last year's, had last year's results, a lot of the conversation was, well, how do I get more points? And, you know, we, we've really tried to emphasize, look, if, if that's where you're spending a lot of your time, you're not spending time in the right place. And, and they've taken that to heart. There, there's a recognition that you, you, you need to look at what's happening in middle school so that you can better predict what will happen and what you need to do to improve the numbers at high school. And I, I really, you know, I really do think that our, our school partners are better understanding the power of the tools that they have at their fingertips with MySchoolInfo and, and these, these, these new results. It's not just about the test score. We've been saying that for a long time. I don't think everyone believed us for a long time. But now that they are seeing it and they can, you know, create strategies based on a broader range of inputs, that's having a difference. And long-term, I think that's going to be huge for our kids.
I think the other thing that we're doing internally is, we've been talking to schools about the continuous cycle of inquiry, about plan, do, check, but we're living plan, do, check. And so just in public school accountability only, I mean, I can look at school standards and system support and federal programs are working on the plan. And then I have a team working on the do, which is the monitoring. And then we have the check, which is the evaluation. That's what we're asking schools to do and we're doing it alongside them. I know Stacy's teams are doing the same thing. And so that's what I think is so lovely and it's just the perfect timing. It's just all the stars have aligned and we're able to not just talk it, but do it. Schools are, they're doing it as well. So you're, you're seeing the results in just one year. Just imagine where we'll be in 10 or 15 when we're writing that story, Commissioner Key.
Great. Thank you. All right. Ms. Newton, anything else on ESSA?
We have a meeting.
A microphone?
We have a meeting on October 24th at 9:30. So I know it will be live streamed, so if any of you want to tune in then, we'll have an ESSA object then.
Super. Thank you so much. And on the forward front, and I'll, I'll probably get Ms. Chambers to help on this a little bit. The, the big action on, on, on forward was the Data and Policy Symposium on September 27th, which was in partnership with UA Little Rock and the Institute for Chief Data Officers. And there were about 100 folks there from a variety of backgrounds. I was unable to go because of some campus commitments. And I think the focus was on, was on data, its potential power, some recognition of how scary it is to be that transparent that data shows, but that, that there is ultimate, ultimately really big benefits. And the next steps are underway with a real focus on the forward communities, plugging into conversations regarding, regarding the agency data infrastructure and then data-driven policymaking with this eye to, you know, a true, truly sustainable longitudinal data system for the state. So, but you were there, I, I think, was anybody else there? I know Ms. Chambers was. Oh, and Ms. Newton, so anything that y'all have to add about that?
I was, you, you teed that up well. I was just really impressed with the attendance in terms of how diverse it was, in terms of all the different perspectives that come to bear on education and how effective we are. I also thought the method was interesting in terms of conveying the information. Most of it was panel and so there were interesting questions that then the panel members had the opportunity to weigh in and offer their unique and, and in some cases, very distinctive perspectives. And I, I guess I would say in close, it was, I, it's something I hope that we can continue, not just a moment in time. I think if we can continue to build with that kind of community of thought, we'll be able to accelerate and grow the impact.
All right. And, and Ms. Zook is going to be transitioning into my role as liaison and we need to figure out exactly when makes the most sense on that and we'll, we'll figure that out in the coming, coming days. And then finally, oh, did you have anything on, okay, all right. And then finally, Task Force on Family Engagement and Learning and Deeper, and Deeper Learning. Ms. Dean is not here, but I think Ms. Zook, did you have some?
Kim Wright, the actual very person is here, so we'll let her, unless, I don't want to impose on her. And as she's making her way to the microphone, I mentioned, we talked about family and student and stakeholder engagement. The State Chamber, Arkansas Learns and America Succeeds put on a, an event, unfortunately conflicted on the same day as the Forward event, but it brought business leaders from across the state, around the nation, local legislators, school people. In fact, I told the guy from Gosnell, he won the prize because he got up at 2:30 in the morning to drive down to be there for a 7:30 event. But they were sharing their desire to work with the schools. They were sharing their, how it had worked in different places and, and all of that. So the commissioner was there, among others, Kathy Smith, Corey Anderson were in and out. And I think that everybody is on the same page that is aware. And then the more people are aware, the more other people they can make aware. So with that, we'll turn it over to Kim.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. Kim Wright, Director for Family and Community Engagement. Where do I begin? So much is happening so fast with this whole project and process. So last time we were here, we let you guys know about the five regional meetings that would be happening in October across the state. Currently, two of those have already happened. The first one was in Jonesboro and the second one in Malvern. They were really just phenomenal. We, we didn't get the attendance that we had hoped for at those sites, but those were our first meetings. But what we did get is the diversity and we had, we had students, we had teachers, we had business leaders, we had a judge, we've had superintendents. I mean, we've had all of the right people at the table having very good discussions about this. And I would say that the feedback that we got from them was 100% positive in that, wow, you are actually listening to us. We have a voice and you guys are just listening. Because when they would be sharing their feedback, we, we use roundtable discussion style, so we would throw out something for them to discuss and look at and give us feedback on, and then they would share. They, actually, they would do written feedback so that we have that to take back with us to analyze and, and move forward. But they also shared out from each group. And I did have a few people say, you know what, you guys heard, you know, some things you need to change or some things that we need to do and, and we didn't make excuses or say we can't do that. We are listening and we are going to do everything that we can to, to meet the needs of all Arkansans. And so with that, the, the feedback is wonderful. What we did is, is we sat down with the team and we said, okay, how can we get the participation up in the next three meetings? We're not just going to be complacent with, well, whoever shows up, shows up. So we sent out an email and said, how about let's target specifics? If, if you're a teacher, who's coming? Who are you bringing with you? What students? If you're a parent, contact some parents, get somebody to come with you, ask them to bring a family. So those personal invitations. So it's not just so, hey, here's a meeting, they might have seen a flyer somewhere, but a, a much more personal invitation. And so they're, they're making some adjustments in how we are addressing getting the participation up. So we're looking forward to the upcoming meeting, which is going to be this Wednesday in Huntsville. And then following that, we still have the McGee meeting on the 23rd and then the final meeting here in Little Rock on the 25th. We do encourage, Ms. Newton came to the Malvern and would, would you like to share anything about that Malvern meeting?
I told them a little bit about it earlier, so, but it, it was a great group, some great conversations, a really diverse group, and so, so I was very pleased.
Yes. And so we encourage each of you, if you have time, to come to one of the other meetings. We would love to have you there and see the process because I think what, what we are, when we're working with CCSSO and, and the National Association for Family and School Community Engagement, what we're hearing from them in feedback is your process is what is making this such a good project. You guys are going to get the results you want because of your process. It's making sure that every voice is heard, that we are, we're making changes along the way to make it better. And, and so we're, we're very proud about that and just looking forward to hearing these next few groups tell us what we need to do and what that direction is. And, and in those meetings, prior to that, on September 7th, the Coalition for Family and Community Engagement created and developed six, what we were first calling essential standards. Like if you, these are the core kind of foundation things. And if they, that, this is what they said, they want to keep it small and keep it short so that it's not too cumbersome of a document, you know, once we put that out there. They came up with six essential standards. We have now got feedback that they wanted to drop the word standard because they didn't want that to be confused with our curriculum, our state curriculum standards. And so currently, they're being just called the essentials. That could change. If, if, you know, coalition or feedback from our groups tell us, then that's what we'll do is we'll change it. So currently, they're called the six essentials. So they created those. And under each essential, there are essential elements, like what are the main topics that might fall underneath each one of those. And so we show, what we did is we just typed up one example of one sheet of the framework and one of it is, the first one is communication. So we just typed up what that was, an example of what that may look like. And then we typed up one example of the toolkit and what that might look like in support of communication. And that's one of the things that we showed at the two previous regional meetings and got feedback on. What, is this user-friendly? You know, does, does it make sense to you? Do you understand it? What would you change? What do you like? You know, those kinds of things. And so we are excited that we're, we're getting that feedback and starting to make revisions already based on the feedback that we've already gotten. In the meantime, we've also, I think I mentioned, we went to CCSSO meeting in Salt Lake City, Utah, and we got wonderful feedback there that we came back and started making some changes then, as well as just a lot of kudos on the work that we're doing. And so we're, you know, we're happy about that. Let's see. We also, Aurelio Montemayor, who is our facilitator, he's, he works with us on the task force, but he also is our external facilitator at the meetings. He works for an Equity Assistance Center, the South, in, out of San Antonio, Texas. And they have started an advisory committee with that Equity Assistance Center. And so we've partnered with them on that as well and intended a convening on, in Nashville to talk about equity, to make sure that equity is a focus for us, not just in family and community engagement, but spreading the word and making sure agency-wide that we keep equity a focus and, and what does that look like? And, and so that was really wonderful. So that Committee of Practice will continue to meet. So we have our very own little, I don't even know what it's called, but there's an app and we all stay on it and, and only us can see it. And so it, it's going to be a good way to continue to network with people that, across the South States that are working with that. So we're really excited about staying in touch and, and having that network and partnership as well. see it. And so, it's going to be a good way to continue to network with people that, across the South States that are working with that. So, we're really excited about staying in touch and having that network and partnership as well.
And also, I've had Ms. Wendell forward to each of you in writing a lot of what she has said in Ms. Dean and Dr. Hill's report.
And so, just in terms of thinking about our work moving forward, so, your vision for when the essentials or standards or whatever the final name is, might come back to us? What's your, what's your sense of kind of, what's the best guess?
Okay. So, we're still moving forward that we're going to have the framework, which are the essentials and those elements that go underneath by the end of December. December 31st was our original deadline, and we are still, we believe that we're on track to do that and are still shooting for that. One of the things that we would love to do, we discussed it over the last couple of months in the task force, is we would really like to have a work session with the entire board on those before we, you know, take it too much further. Once we've had that last October 25th meeting here in Central, and we get a chance to kind of add what they had to say into the documents, then maybe sometime early November, if we could actually have just a work session with you guys and get your feedback.
That's exactly helpful in terms of our planning. So, that's, and so, work session late this year, and then some action early next year.
Yes.
Sounds great.
Talk about the CCSSO meeting. I understand we were kind of bragged on a little bit.
We were. We were. Yes. So, when we first came on board and were at the CCSSO meetings, and Megan Abels was there with me, and a lot of the other states were much further along than we were. Some states already had family and community engagement standards in place. And so, they were just in a process of revising and updating and moving forward. And we were starting with a blank slate. And they were like, oh, wow, you guys have got a long way to go. And even after that second meeting, they were like, oh, gosh, you guys, you guys are doing great. They were commending the work that we were doing, but they still knew that, to meet that December 31st deadline, that we had a lot of work to do. And so, this time, they were astonished at the amount of work that we had done. After all of the eight states that are involved in the cohort shared, one of the directors for the National Association stood up and spoke about Arkansas. He didn't speak about any seven of the other states. He talked about Arkansas. And he, about, because we had, the new cohort two had come on, and they were listening to our reports, just to give them some ideas on kind of, you know, the things that they may have to go through. And they said, Arkansas is a perfect example of, right now, you may not be able to see the light at the end of the tunnel, but look where they are. We had some roundtable discussions where we got to work with some of the cohort two people. And what was funny is the people that were at our table were like, oh, my gosh, we got to work with Arkansas. We were at the Arkansas table. And other people were like, we didn't get to hear Arkansas, you know. So, it made us feel really good. And we know that we're doing the work that we truly believe in and believe that this can transform Arkansas and transform family and community engagement and how we, how that whole thing works in Arkansas. So, we're really excited about it.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks for all, all your work, Ms. Newton.
I have a question that, I know that you're doing a lot on stakeholder engagement right now. Are there any plans for, once we get the essentials and you get the toolkit underneath it for, because one of the things I've heard at the regional stakeholder meeting and this regional was, people would ask, well, I'm here to hear what somebody else is doing about this. And so, as they find ways that work in their district, have you got any kind of, any plans for a way that districts can, you know, share, well, under this particular essential, I found that this works? And let them be able to continue to share and continue to update that.
So, right now, what we're planning is the hope that the whole framework and the toolkit will be able to release hopefully sometime in maybe January, February, as we, you know, just get it all cleaned up and presentable. And that toolkit itself will be what we say is a living, breathing document. The framework, we tend to think that it will stay fairly the same thing until we see that we need to update over time. But the toolkit is a living, breathing document that we will be adding to all the time and that we do want, just like our hashtag Engagement Matters AR, like, we have lots of schools that are already starting to share on there the things that they are doing with family and community engagement. So, we have encouraged them to put those things on there. And then, once the toolkit gets finished, that they will be able to share the things that they're doing and are working. And we will be able to add those to the toolkit just on an ongoing basis.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
One thing that I'll add to that is, is, you know, when Ms. Kaufman was up here talking about, you know, we want to put these positive stories out there about, well, it's the same here. And we don't see them as separate issues. You know, the continuous cycle of inquiry, family, parental and family engagement, community engagement is part of that. You know, it's so, when we talk about this work, you know, I don't, I don't want folks to see it as something separate because really, it's, it's all embedded. It's all interrelated. And when we think about our systems of support, this, this is one of those things that helps move the results in the academics. It removes, you know, it helps make positive results on discipline. It's positive results across the board. So, you know, it's positive results when a district needs to go out and say, we have a need and we might need to build a school, so we have to ask for a village. I mean, they're all interrelated. So, I'm just, I'm proud of, I mean, Kim is just, she's been amazing. And, you know, the feedback that we get, that she doesn't often know about, because sometimes I don't do a good enough job of sharing it like I should, is just, hey, Kim Wright is awesome. You know, I, I'm so glad y'all did this. I'm so glad you created this position so she could do this work. And then, you know, we are adding to our team because on the federal side, we had Dr. Millet moved on. And so, we're about to identify or bring onboard replacement on the federal program side for Dr. Millet, who will be working hand-in-hand with Kim on these same topics. So, great job.
Thank you. And I definitely want to say, it is not all Kim Wright. Megan Abels, Ladonna Spain, and Freddie Scott, I mean, and the task force itself, who is helping guide us in our thinking and the directions that we need to go. So, this is without a doubt, a team effort. So, thank you to everyone who's involved that helps us keep moving.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, that was exactly my point. I wanted to thank the commissioner for the investment in terms of department staff, but the board members past and present in terms of investment and time, and then Forward, which has been helpful as well in terms of some of the facilitative work. So, it takes a village to make this stuff work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think our final thing, Dr. Hernandez, you want to make an announcement or introduction?
Good morning. I'd just like to make a quick introduction. You know, as we've been talking a lot about the items that we're working on in this transition and full implementation of Essa, it's been a true challenge in trying to move to this area of support from compliance. And so, as we are doing that, you know, one of the tremendous upsides is we're getting lots of calls for support, hey, we need your help with this, we need your help with that. And one of our biggest partners that we're trying to really utilize is our co-ops. And so, I had the opportunity to, we had the great opportunity to make a huge steal in personnel. So, we were able to get one of the leaders of the co-ops and kind of the lead Teacher Center Coordinator. And I just wanted to introduce her to you today. She'll be working with Office of Coordinator, Coordinated Support and Service as Assistant State Superintendent. And just want to introduce Ms. Lynette Thrasher. I'm sure you've probably seen her around before. She doesn't like this kind of stuff, but she will be a tremendous asset for us. And she's already proven to be that as a partner when working with the co-ops. And she'll continue to do that for us from here on out. So, just wanted to introduce her to you.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else to come before us? All right. Very good meeting this morning. We are, I'll take, I'll invite a motion to adjourn?
Second.
motion by Mr. Williamson, second by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, say aye. Have a great month and see you next month.